Thank you all for joining us this evening for the Town Council Regular Meeting on Monday, October the 12th, 2020. Thank you to all that are viewing us online and that remain cautious and safe in all that we do. We will have a pledge to allegiance, an invocation, and then we will consider the minutes. So if everybody would stand please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Heavenly Father, we ask that you guide us in all that we think, say, and do this evening for the betterment of our town. Please protect us and help us to do the things that you place before us justly, fairly, and honestly. In His name we pray. Amen.
We do have before us a set of meeting minutes from September the 25th for a special call meeting and for September the 28th. Ms. Cook has shown me a couple of things that, several things that we need to take corrective action to. So we will not be voting and approving those two minutes until those corrections have been made. Ms. Cook, would you please submit your changes to Mr. Broom so that we can get those changed? Mr. Broom, would you please resubmit them to us at our next meeting for approval?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. That way we won't go over each individual change. Public comment. Pursuit of the section 2-46 of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill. Any citizen of the town may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign in outside of council chambers prior to the start of the meeting. To maintain social distancing, citizens will only be allowed into council chambers one at a time to give their comments. Debbie, do we?
We don't have anybody from the public here.
Okay. Thank you. Presentations. We will begin with presentation number one, information on stormwater credit fees. Jacqueline Martin.
Hi. Can everyone hear me?
You can. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Of course. Thank you for asking me to be here. I truly appreciate it.
Great. What better time for you to talk to us than right after a weekend that we've had four inches of rain?
I know. We had a crazy weekend, didn't we?
It was pretty bad, wasn't it?
We also, so I'm Jacqueline Martin. I am the Stormwater Management Coordinator at the Town of Fort Mill Stormwater Department. We also have Leanne Clark here, who is our Stormwater Manager. She's going to be helping me along and answering some of the questions that I might not be able to answer because she is the leading lady over where we are in stormwater. So basically, this presentation, it's in reference to, so we have a stormwater Facebook page that, if you're not already following or liking already, I definitely recommend that you guys go like and follow it because we post a lot of updates about things there. But we had a post that was talking about how not only residents but commercial as well can utilize our stormwater utility fee credits. And on that, people wanted to hear more about it and wanted us to talk more about it. So this presentation was born. So I think it was someone supposed to be controlling the slides for me, I believe. All right. There we go.
I think a couple of us have it on our iPads.
Yes. All right. We went to the next slide, so we're good. All right. So in this presentation, basically what we're going to be covering is what is the stormwater utility? And then how is this utility calculated for each household or commercial site? What is a stormwater credit fee? And then we've put together some residential options, some commercial options, and then basically how you apply and more information about the actual utility fees and credit fees.
Okay.
All right. Next slide, please. All right. So what is the stormwater utility? So the stormwater utility is an annual fee. It is paid by all residents of the Town of Fort Mill and also by any commercial sites that are within the town limits. And this annual fleet, annual fee is included on your York County tax bill. And basically what these fees are used for is they fund stormwater services for the town. And that can be various different things from maintenance to stormwater projects and things like that.
Leanne, Jacqueline, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I think it's very important, as this meeting is videotaped for those to watch at home that could not be present, that the stormwater fees on whole, even the stormwater activities, were a requirement by the state of South Carolina for each municipality. It is not something that the Town of Fort Mill dreamed up.
Yeah.
It is something that is bound to have proven in.
Yes. This is not something that we dreamed up. This is something that pretty much every major city, municipality, whatever it is, if you've got somewhere that you're getting your water from, then you're also, you have a stormwater fee. It's pretty across the board with that kind of stuff.
Thank you.
Of course. All right. Next slide, please. All right. So this is talking about how we calculate stormwater fees. And how we calculate them for a residential site versus a commercial site are a little bit different. So for a residential, a single household is measured, measured as an ERU, which is an equivalent residential unit. And one ERU is considered to have a little over 3,400 square feet of impervious surface. The exact number is there on your PowerPoint is 3,3,473 square feet. So one ERU is a $72 annual fee. So for every year that you live in your house in the Town of Fort Mill city limits, you're going to have a $72 fee included on your York County tax bill for your stormwater fees. And then for a commercial site, it varies a little bit because the size is obviously much bigger. So based on the amount of impervious area on the site, which we have calculated, they take drones out there and they basically, they, we decide what the impervious area on the site is. The square footage of the impervious area on the site is evaluated and then it's divided by that ERU number of 3,473 square feet. And that's how we get the number, the total number of ERUs for that one commercial site. And so for the ERUs, for, if, say if there's 12, you would do 12 times $72 a year, and then that would be the annual stormwater fee for that year for a commercial site. But what most people are probably interested in as residents of the Town of Fort Mill is that you pay $72 every year for your stormwater maintenance fees.
Jacqueline, I think it's important for people that do not work in this field of study that you give a description for what impervious is. I know what it is, having worked for utility, but I bet there are dozens and dozens of people that do not.
Of course. So impervious surface basically means that water cannot move through it, pretty much. So like a sponge, for sit to say, is a pretty pervious surface because it has a lot of holes. Water moves through it fairly easily, whereas if you have like a slab of concrete, water is not going to go through concrete, it's going to flow over concrete. That's kind of the difference.
Yes. And I think it's important to note that impervious in a residential use would be concrete drives, asphalt, asphalt roofs. It would be the things that we add to the natural landscape that reroute the water or cause puddling in areas that it would not have occurred in its natural state.
Yes. 100%. That's exactly what it is.
Thank you.
Of course.
Sorry.
You're fine. You know so much about this.
I worked for utility for 25 years.
All right. Next slide, please. All right. So this is actually an excerpt that's straight from our ordinance talking about stormwater utility credits. So this is talking about things, basically what you can do in order to have a reduction of that fee that you pay every year. So to not read directly off this, it's basically, we have certain things that you can do on your property. If you're a commercial site or some type of, like if you're a school or we have the Greenway, there's certain educational options for the community that you can do that'll basically take that fee and reduce it by a certain percentage. And this credit is an ongoing reduction for the amount of stormwater fees that are assessed for that parcel for the system. So obviously that meaning if you're a residential site, one ERU, that equivalent residential unit, then that would be a reduction of that $72 a year annual fee. And then of course, for something like the Greenway that is rather large, that's going to be a much bigger fee, well then they can get percentages taken off in terms of reduction of what their stormwater yearly fee would be on their tax bill. Now we can go to the next slide, please. And so this is another excerpt that's directly from our utility credit fee manual. I also have it linked here if anybody would like to click on it and take a look at it. But here is basically the chart that we use to basically show you what the credit fees are and then what the kind of the reduction is. And then later on in the presentation, we'll go over a couple of these that we've picked that are, we think are perfect for a residential or are better suited for a commercial. But as of late, currently no residents utilize these fee credits at the time. And then commercially, we have a couple places here in the Town of Fort Mill that do, such as Kingsley, Springfield Commercial, the Greenway is a big one. Our school district utilizes them as well, and just to name a few. We can go to the next slide, please. All right. So for some residential options, all right. So the two main ones that are also my cup of tea would be the rain gardens and the rain barrels. So a rain garden is a specifically designed garden that takes the precipitation or the stormwater and filters it through the groundwater to clean the water and allow it to filter out through the groundwater, as like a natural cleaning, pretty much. This is something that we, if you do have a rain garden, we do have to come out and take a look at it and just make sure that, you know, it's put in properly. There is some math and calculations that go into sizing a rain garden. There's specific type of plants that are recommended for it. I am certified as a master rain gardener through Clemson Extension. So if anybody has any very specific questions about like indigenous plants or things that we recommend for, they recommend for putting in their rain gardens, you're more than welcome to come talk to me. It's, I'm a little bit of a nerd about it. It's one of my favorite things to talk about. And then the rain barrels is basically a rainwater collection system. And you see a lot of these, they will literally, a lot of people, people who have them on their house, they literally look like the, like the old timey barrels that you would see. And they're wooden and they can be decorative and pretty, but they just collect the rainwater and then that can be used to, you know, water your plants, lawn care, gardens, and things like that. Obviously, we don't recommend that anybody tries to just drink rainwater, but you can use it for yard maintenance and things like that. And then as well as the impervious surface reduction, basically that would be minimizing driveways, concrete patios. If you have a pool, minimizing the amount of concrete that you're using for your pool. We've, I've heard of some people in doing my own research, some people opt to do kind of, it's, it's like an impervious concrete situation for their driveway, which basically just means that the rainwater can filter through the actual like material of your driveway. That has been done in a lot of places, but it's just something to think about in terms of, you know, how much sidewalks you're having. If you're having a patio, what you're making it out of. If you're doing a pool, what kind of materials or how much of that material that you're going to be using. And then the low impact parcel, that's basically, you're showing and proving to us that your property has like the minimal impervious area. So that would be minimal amounts of area that water can not filtrate through. And that would be, for us, for that credit, it would be less than 7% of your property. And any of these, I believe the percentage that it would range for a reduction of your fee range between 10 to 20%. Leanne can correct me if I'm wrong on that, but I believe for these, it's 10 to 20% reduction on these.
Great.
And next slide, please. All right. So these are our educational credits. These are the main ones that we typically, these are the big ones for us. Like I said, our big ones who use stuff like this would be like the Greenway. They put on all kinds of awesome educational options for kids, adults, whatever it is. And they do all kinds of events to try and teach people about, you know, environmental conservation, water quality, and things like that. And then the school districts. The school district uses this as well. All schools, in order to have this educational credit, they have to have a curriculum in the school teaching about stormwater and water quality and all those kinds of things to students. We go out and we do, obviously not right now because of coronavirus and things like that, but in the past, we've gone out and we've done, you know, careers on wheels for the schools where we basically, we take out our equipment and we show the kids kind of what we're doing at work, presentations, things like that. I know you guys have all met Drippy, our famous mascot that shows up at all of the festivals and Christmas and things like that. And so that's part of that as well. And so these credits, basically they, you, when you have an educational, like an educational event or watershed stewardship, which is, you know, doing events in terms of like protecting the actual local waterways that flow through your property, you, basically you have to prove to us that you did it. Just show us basically, hey, this is what we did. This is how many people attended, and this is kind of an overview of everything that went on. And once you do all of that, you would submit that with your application for the stormwater utility fee credit. And we look over everything and then we hopefully, as long as everything's done, we do give you credit.
Great. Great.
I do have a question about this. Um, yeah, I live in a large neighborhood and we do have significant amount of parks and HOAs that have irrigation and so forth. Is there some of these options you could visualize being open for an HOA to be able to file for credit and doing whether it be the education portion of it or a rain garden or something to help lower the cost of the stormwater fees that they may have?
Um, I would, I think it would depend. So if there's common area, is that, like there's a common area that the HOA is maintaining? Is that what you're asking about?
Yes, there are multiple ones, but there's a council we've put into a lot of the designs of many of the neighborhoods in the recent years. So I'm just wondering if there's a way we can link what we're requiring of neighborhoods and try to make sure that we're providing minimal stormwater runoff at the same time?
Of course.
And then possible.
This is Leanne. Can you hear me?
Yes. Got you, Leanne. Thank you.
So when, when we build the stormwater fees, HOAs aren't billed directly, so there is no fee for an HOA. So the HOA wouldn't necessarily be saving on it. So the way the program stands right now, I don't think there's any way that the HOA could benefit from it. It's maybe something that we could look at for maybe the residents in that neighborhood or something, but I think it's the way it stands. And I don't know, Jacqueline, maybe you disagree, but I don't think there's any way for an HOA to utilize it as it is right now.
Okay. If they're not being charged, that makes some sense. I do know our neighborhood has several people with rain barrels. So I know when you made your initial post, there were, there was a lot of excitement in our neighborhood, a lot of information sharing. So yeah, I'm sure you got several applications for people trying to move forward to receive some of these credits. So thank you guys.
Of course. And then, I mean, at the same time, if the HOA, if there's a common area that the HOA feels that they still want to put a rain garden in, or if they want to have some type of, at an HOA meeting, if you want like me or Leanne or both of us to come speak to you guys about it, we would be more than happy to come meet with you guys. Obviously with coronavirus, things are a little bit different at this moment. But if that's something that HOAs are interested in, then we would be more than happy to talk to, talk to residents about that.
Okay. We'll work offline on that.
Of course.
If you want, we'll plan for that because I think there are some opportunities and we're starting to do our HOA meetings by Zoom. So you still could do a presentation possibly. So if you'll kind of put a note, we'll get together after our meeting at some point.
Of course.
Thank you.
Great information and the timeliness of it as we will all, I think we just received a tax bill at my home. And I think everyone annually needs to be reminded that this is a taxing request, demand by the state. I do think environmentally, it is a good process, especially for a community like ours that continues to develop. But I appreciate the efforts to do a very nice presentation. And do you council members have any questions for Leanne or Jacqueline? Hearing none?
I would just request, we put this presentation on our website. Be sure it's out there for everybody. Like I said, the presentation's been great, so keep it up.
Yeah. Well, thank you. I appreciate that. But yes, this was also, I was going to end with, we will be putting this presentation, it'll be an extended version, so it'll go into more detail about each specific credit in a more detailed way. For this, in terms for saving on time, because I know we have, you guys have other things that need to be talked about, but this will be put onto our website. It'll be on our stormwater page. We have a stormwater, we have a stormwater page, and then we have the stormwater utility, utility fee page, and it will be posted there. And then so like I said, where you can find more information and that link right there, that's our stormwater page. And then we also here have a link to the stormwater credit fee application. So that would be the application that you fill out. And then, Leanne, you can correct me on this, but I believe they're due in May of each year, I think is what it is. Yes. So they're due in May. So you turn them in in May, and then their tax bills, I believe, are billed in September. And so then it would reflect on your September bill for your credit fees.
Excellent presentation by our stormwater folks, and it will be posted so that the public can log on and review that information as well. Council, with no further questions on the stormwater process, we will move into old business items. We will have a second reading on old business item number one, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Four, Finance and Taxation, Division Four, Development Impact Fees, so as to revise the development impact fee discount rates for the town. Our expert is Chris Pettit. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept the business item number one. Say again.
I have a motion for Mr. Shirey and a second from Mr. Helms. Chris, has anything changed from the first reading?
No, Mayor. Nothing has changed since it was before you for first reading approval.
Okay. All right. Council members, do you have any questions from the week or two weeks since we last met on this item?
The only question is, Mr. Pettit, have we received, or Mr. Broom, any comments? I know previously when we've discussed in half these, we had a good bit of comments brought in to staff. Have we received any comments, good, bad, or indifferent since the last time in discussions?
No. I don't.
I did have one that was in favor of the changes that we were making at this point and approved of the recommendations and was somebody that wasn't before. So I think we're all good.
Good. All right. Any further questions or comments?
And as the second reading is, it'll be parking rec standing as to where it was prior, fire department moving up to 51% and municipal facilities going to 56%, correct?
And Jamie, that's one of the changes I had in the minute from last time is that the motion itself didn't actually specify what the discounts would be. So making sure that we're, that's recorded.
We'll address this, address the budget.
Right. What you mean?
These impact, these discount rates, last meeting we just.
We did talk about it at length during our last meeting.
Right.
You saying that we're going to discuss them again?
When we read, just read.
In, in March.
Right.
Got you. Yes. Yes. I think that's important to note on every budget item, that this particular budget is in light of the pandemic and the revenue streams that we do or may not know. No crystal ball is owned by anyone here. If you did, we'd all be buying Lotto tickets and not have to sit here. So we will be revisiting our budget in March of 2021, and we will talk again. I think it's notable that impact fees and other items are at our discretion to discuss at any point in time. The budget, however, is driven by state law, and we must adhere to a schedule for our fiscal year. So with that, do we have any further questions or comments in relation to old business item number one?
Mr. Pettit, when will these actually go into effect if approved?
If approved, as written, they would go into effect 30 days from today. And that'll allow staff to communicate those changes and update any internal documents that we need to, to implement those new discount rates.
Okay. And this is the last time for this particular edition of this ordinance that we will vote on it and start the 40-day window. Is that correct?
That is correct. Tonight is the final reading of those changes to the discount rates. The ordinance would be effective this evening, and those fees, changes would be effective 30 days from today.
Thank you. Thank you. Everybody good on when it will become active, when we'll talk about it again, and what the rates we decided upon are? Yes? All right. All those in favor of the motion on the table to approve old business item number one? Mr. Helms? Mr. Moody?
Right.
Mr. Shirey?
Approved.
Larry? Trudy?
Approved.
Lisa?
Approved.
And I also approve, that will be a unanimous vote for old business item number one. New business items. New business item number one, we will begin with a public hearing and then have a first reading. An ordinance amending the mixed use concept plan and development conditions for the Pleasant slash Vista project consisting of York County, oh wow, York County tax map numbers. Mmm. Nah.
Sorry, Mayor.
Loving it, loving it. So I'm going to condense, and we're going to say 020-09-01-027, 028. I'm checking. 030, 31, 032, 033, 034, 035, 036, 078, and 079, which begs, where did 029 go? Containing approximately 156.96 acres at the intersection of Pleasant Road and Vista Road. Penelope is our expert on this topic, and we will open the public hearing at this point in time. We have.
We have two names on there.
All right. We have two folks that would like to speak on this topic during our public hearing. Thank you. Thank you very much. Welcome. Good to see you too. This is Cooper Willis. For those of you that cannot see, who has joined us?
I'm now.
Yes. Thank you for being.
Doing well?
Yes.
Well, thank you for, yeah, coming out during COVID as well and having your meeting. So I think I understand the rules tonight. It's just a couple minutes, but we're limited on time. So I really wanted to make tonight about Encompass. I just wanted to come and thank everyone in person for taking the time to come out, have the meeting. I want to thank Planning Commission, and we had a meeting with them a few weeks ago. Town staff has been fantastic. Penelope's been wonderful to work with. So on behalf of myself and Serena Davis within Encompass, we just wanted to say thank you to everyone. Serena is sorry she couldn't be here. She had exposure to COVID, and so she's quarantined. I don't think she hasn't, but she's quarantined. So Ron Scott, who is council for Encompass, is going to speak on her behalf. Ron's going to step in in just a minute. He's going to give us a short presentation on Encompass. I'll just add that they have been fantastic to work with. I think they'll be a great addition to the community, and I do think it's a need here in the community, and I think they'll be great long-term partners. So that's really it for me. Thanks.
I would like to remind everyone that Mr. Willis is an enigma when it comes to developers. How, in my time here on council, we've had none that have approached us and said, I'll work with you on traffic items such as the large one at Gold Hill and I-77. I'll work with you on the timing of my development. I will be patient. And you have.
Yes.
I think that that is just an unbelievable extension of kindness and teamwork that I certainly appreciate. So I, for one, would like to thank you.
Well, thank you.
You set a standard. And you set a standard that I hope others will follow. So thank you so much for putting Fort Mill first.
Yes. No, thank you.
Thank you.
So I think, thank you for your time. Right. I believe no questions or anything. I go.
Anybody? Anybody have any questions for Cooper?
Not yet, I mean, we may after Penelope presents, but.
So I'll wait outside then, in case.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, how are you? Thank you for joining us.
Glad to be here tonight.
And you are Ron Scott?
I'm Ron Scott.
Nice to have you, thank you for joining us.
I thank you all in the midst of all that's going on for taking time to see someone in person, who we appreciate it, and everyone's efforts to be safe. Uh, I heard Cooper mention, uh, that Serena Davis of Encompass, they will be here tonight and I'm very excited for her. Unfortunately, she was exposed to COVID, and out of the abundance of caution, I think we also appreciate it, and they just wanted everyone to be safe. Uh, the ordinance amendment that is before you tonight for first reading is principally because of Encompass's desire to develop a rehabilitation hospital. We're very excited about that opportunity. Encompass operates around one-hundred-and-thirty-six inpatient rehabilitation hospitals around the country, serving patients who suffer from strokes, heart, various neurological events, and other health conditions. Encompass does not provide, uh, drugs or alcohol or dual help rehabilitation, but more so physical.
So everyone would be patient, whether, I think we're having technical difficulties again, I'm going to go try and swap out their phone, and hopefully that'll fix the issue, so we'll jump back on here shortly.
Okay, thank you.
All right, for those of you that might have been caught in the time warp of technology, we had a very nice presentation, uh, from a gentleman that will be working with the Encompass Rehabilitation Hospital that is proposed for a site up off of Pleasant and Vista Road. This particular project had many years ago been approached, not for the hospital, but rather for the development of the land, by Cooper Willis. In doing so, Cooper very astutely and kindly offered to work with the town on the timing of the development. And as, you know, blessings would have it, this particular hospital, which is very well-known, would like to build a rehab hospital, uh, on this, on part of this tract of land. They would hope to began construction in 2021, completing and then going into operation 2023. They're waiting on the Certificate of Occupancy or Certificate of Need to come from the state uh, so that they can proceed with the building of this particular hospital. It would afford Fort Mill one-hundred-and-four well-paying jobs. It is an excellent opportunity for us to have services that Fort Mill currently does not have. With that, we have no further, uh, presentation or request from outside. I would like to close the public meeting. And, um, if we could, do we have any questions for Mr. Willis or Mr. Scott before we release them to, um, go home?
I don't, but we haven't been presented, is Penelope going to present more?
I know, I just didn't think we needed to keep them, um, any longer, unless you do.
I don't know, because I don't know what questions they may have, but if they want to go, we can reach out.
Penelope, would you like to begin your presentation, please, ma'am?
Yes, Mayor, um, good evening, everyone. Um, as we had the public hearing, and, and Mayor has stated, this is the first reading for an ordinance amending the mixed-use concept plan and development conditions for the Pleasant Vista MXU project. Council, you know, as a mixed-use project, they, um, write their own regulations. So here we are, going through the process to amend the regulations for four amendments. And just briefly, um, you know, the, I will state the amendments. The First Amendment is to designate, to allow the senior housing units to be either side of Vista Road. Currently, um, Mr. Cooper Willis does own predominantly all the, the homes, um, on Vista Road and all the way to Coaltharp. So that is one amendment. The Second Amendment is to include the hospitals and medical facilities as an allowable land use activity within the contemplated commercial development. The Third Amendment is to increase the maximum allowed square, um, feet of commercial building. Initially, it was fifty thousand, now he is proposing eighty thousand, and he will be also removing the, the minimum square feet to be dedicated to the live-work space development. So it, this is, this is a good opportunity to have more commercial and, and reduce some of the residential that was approved. And the final thing, again, is, is to limit the higher-density residential development to parcels exclusively to the north. This is removing that so that they can be on the south of Vista. Um, and also, it is reducing the maximum gross residential unit density by the amount of acreage conveyed for the commercial development. We did have the Planning Commission on September fifteenth. The commission did, um, vote, um, approval by a vote of six to one. I'm here for any other question that you might have.
So, Penelope, from what I understand, you just said that the, um, commercial piece of the, we increased the maximum amount of square footage, which, to your point, is always very good. One of our concerns from this council and other mixed-use subdivisions and developments like this is that the minimum be, um, raised as much as possible. Is there a reason we didn't raise the minimum at the same time the maximum was increased?
You know, it's just the way that it was in the ordinance. Um, you know, it was basically, you know, the minimum was always ten thousand. So they did not, um, ask to increase the minimum, um, for that. This was just, the proposal from the applicant was just to raise the maximum, um, commercial space.
All right, and what is the scheduled build-out? I know to, um, the mayor's point earlier, this has been kind of on hold for a while until a lot of the traffic and other, um, mainly the exit ramps, the work was complete. What is the estimated build-out for this project? Do we have any limitations on the residential piece of this or the commercial pieces?
That, um, one second.
And I, I think while Penelope's looking, the question that Miss Cook is asking is about the entire one-hundred-and-fifty-six acres and the development agreement for that, not the particular proposal for the Encompass Rehabilitation.
It's a ten-year vested right, um, due to, due to the size of this development. So, you know, it was approved back in fourteen. Cooper Willis, I could make, maybe answer that on, on a timeframe. Like the mayor stated, there were some roadway improvements that needed to be made until he was able to go vertical. There are, um, the ninety-eight apartments have been built at Legacy at Fort Mill, and we are going through the process right now. If, 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 Chris, if you have Exhibit B showing, um, the conceptual plan of Six A and Six B, there are some, about two-hundred-and-thirty apartments that we are reviewing right now through a construction document, um, review process.
And because of our partnership that we have, um, with the school district, I know you guys are talking on a regular basis, are they aware of the, um, reduced impact on residential homes that the changes have? Or will we be notifying them at some point?
We, yes, and actually, there's a, a gentleman by the name of Dale Holden. He works for the school district out of Columbia, that he does, um, research and market analysis of, you know, he called, he contacts me quarterly, asking about the number of units and what has been built and what is changing. And, and quite frankly, it was very timely, last week, he gave me a call, and I gave him, um, the new information and also this proposed ordinance. So, um, he is aware that the numbers, based on the commercial that Mr. Willis is, is needing for a Cupid Health to use, um, that will get reduced. So they are aware, um, you know, not, I, I haven't talked personally to Superintendent Epps, but his, um, research team, Dale Holden is aware of that.
Perfect, no, that's okay. Now, it is a happy thought that, you know, for once, we could go back and be able to show, you know, in addition to one other development I'm aware of, uh, fewer homes than was originally requested or projected. So, um, as soon as, uh, we are thorough and are able to make our decision, um, I, I feel certain they'll be happy to hear it.
That's my, my two biggest concerns is just the amount of build-out and the timing of it, and having some type of window to where we're not going to be getting it all in the first year or two, just because of some of the other developments that have experienced, um, changes and build-out.
Once it's fully signed and adopted, we have very little leg, if any, to stand on to go back and change it.
Right, waited how many years?
Uh, in twenty-fourteen, so he's waited six years.
And then, like I said, just making sure the minimum, you know, that we're getting the maximum we can out of the commercial space of it. Again, I remember in Mathie, when it was, the mixed-use was written in that, there was no minimums, and we ended up with no commercials. That's why we changed.
Eighty thousand square feet.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
An issue or?
No, the maximum's not an issue, I just wanted to be sure.
We've been burned a couple different times where we set the precedent for a piece of property, and then it sells to a different developer, and then they go to the bare minimums.
Oakland Point is an excellent.
What happened to that?
Exactly right, and that's my concern, and I don't know, know Mr. Willis, but, uh, you know, seems like a great guy, but economy's changing, and I'd hate to see it come back where we think it's going to be eighty thousand commercials, and it ends up being only the ten.
Well, by law, he can do that.
Right, I understand.
Yeah, well, but what's your point, if you do understand?
Is trying to maximize the minimum as much as possible. Would you be open, have we negotiated to more than a ten thousand minimum?
We're not in a position to negotiate a development agreement that has already been signed and given.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate the clarity.
And, and just a clarification, you know, um, this project does not have a development agreement, but it has the development, um, that was, um, approved by town council back in twenty-fourteen. So, you know, the reason for this amendment is for Encompass Health to be able to build a re, a rehabilitation hospital. Um, and they need that increase of the square footage of commercial in order to develop, to be able to, to join into this team with Cooper Willis, um, for the MXU.
The ten can't be diminished, and I get Miss Cook's point. There's another development on the bypass that we require commercial. I haven't seen first commercial thing started there, but the homes are already out of the ground being lived in, so I get the point. I just don't think we're in a position, once it's been determined and agreed upon, that we can go back and revisit the percentages and renegotiate at that point. Is that not correct, Penelope?
That, that is correct, because, you know, this amendment request, um, was, was based on Mr. Cooper, and, and, you know, he did, he just, um, him and, um, Ron Scott proposed the maximum. There was no discussion, um, for, um, changing the minimum.
Yeah, they proposed that we expand the maximum and not withdraw from the minimum, which we would hold them to that regardless, because that was the agreement. To Lisa's point, I think as we learn and we move forward, we probably will ask for larger minimum amounts for development agreements based on the conditions of each time we're approached. And I do think that is a valid and excellent point.
Penelope, because the developer owns all of that, if he's going to, and I, and you may not be able to answer this question, are we going to be able to realign Vista so that we get stoplight on Pleasant?
Um, Mr. Shirey, it's, it's very hard to hear you, but I think I understood the question. Because Mr. Cooper has more land, you know, there, you know, for realignment of Vista Road, is that what your, your question was?
And maybe we can propose a stoplight on Pleasant?
I mean, with any stoplight, we have to have a warrant analysis, traffic signal analysis, um, that we work with SC DOT. So, um, we would have to do, we would have to do a study to make sure a warrant, um, was issued for a traffic light.
We can ask for one, but we would have to have the process fulfilled, and the DOT would have to agree.
And I know they don't like hand them out, but I think the hospital there, that might give us a little bit more ammo.
Well.
We can line it with the upper part of Whitley, and you can bring in the other little top road there and connect in there. That way, we don't have sixteen roads coming into an already congested road.
I think it would have to be concurrent with the plans for Pleasant as it stands. Uh, that is on the long-range planning to widen Pleasant Road, which certainly it is needed. It was met with some resistance from the community along Pleasant. I don't think it's anytime in the very near future, but it remains on the long-range plan.
That's a good point. I wasn't here in twenty-fourteen, so if you give us a rundown of what the original was, and then now the, the density, now that they've added the commercial piece.
Can you hear that, Penelope?
Um, no, ma'am, I could not hear, I think it was Mr. Moody?
It is Mr. Moody, and he's asking, can you give any of the percentages on density versus the, at the time we made the agreement? And what is being looked at at this point, given that we're increasing the commercial footprint?
So basically, what was, you know, one-hundred-and-fifty-six acres, you know, the density of the overall project was the five-point-nine-three dwelling units per acre. So, and, and part of the discussion with Planning Commission, they took that into consideration to, as if we're, we're increasing the commercial, then the maximum number shouldn't get, um, shouldn't be the nine-thirty-one. We should take the, the commercial acreage, so it, it will get reduced. But the density itself for the overall project, you know, would be five-point-nine-three dwelling units per acre.
And all of this is.
And that was what the density was back, that was approved back in twenty-fourteen.
Okay, thanks.
Further questions?
I have one, I just wanted to make a comment, you made reference to, is it Oakland Point or McInville?
Yes.
Property lot?
Yes.
If, um, if I remember correctly, it's not too long after I came on council. What we did not know was that some of that property has been sold to another developer. That's why there were issues as, as far as the actual.
Density.
Density. So that was one of my first, um, one of the first things I wanted.
And, and these types of questions and discussions certainly lead us to take actions in the future as we work with developers. The unfortunate part just with Oakland Point is, once you've done it, once you've signed it, you don't get to go back and renegotiate it. So that was only the point I was trying to make. I, I think Miss Cook is exactly correct, in that we need to be very prudent in ensuring that everything in a development agreement moving forward has some type of requirement that it is what we signed as well, not just that we sign it and they sell it to someone else and different actions are taken.
But if they're coming back to us for changes, it would seem we could negotiate somewhat, or be sure that anything missed previously could be covered this time, seeing as they're coming to us with some changes. I don't know, but that was my questioning, understanding, just making sure that, again, what we've learned over the last six years, if we could make any changes, this would be the time to do it. And not that it's driven by us to negotiate and discuss, but somebody who's been great to work with, so.
Well, I think if the change that they have proposed is in keeping with where we would prefer to go. And they don't always, you know, because I, I do think Chris, Davey, if you would, and Penelope, if you would kind of put together some type of, um, yes, I will speak up. If, if Chris, Davey, and Penelope would guide us through the current process for a development agreement and any changes that might be considered after the development agreement is struck, that would be of benefit to Miss Cook's question. Because the question is coming because we had an agreement that is now opened back up to expand a commercial footprint, which is in our best behalf. Does that also open us up to renegotiate the other parts of that agreement? Is that correct?
Correct.
All right.
It's.
Penelope, Davey, can you do that and make council aware of the? Penelope, Davey, can you do that and make council aware of the restrictions, requirements and needs as we move forward?
Sure, and, and if I can, Mrs. Cook, like, part of your discussion item, your concern is you wish there was no minimum of the ten thousand square feet for commercial? Is, is that what you're?
A higher minimum.
A higher minimum, okay.
Also, if we increase the maximum from fifty to eighty thousand, could we increase that additional thirty thousand on minimum too? So, to require forty thousand square feet as a minimum or thirty thousand. Again, protecting ourselves if for some reason the property is sold and we are locked into it. It seems that, yeah, again, just trying to learn from past mistakes that we could have, that we've learned from, yeah, just making sure we're covering as best as possible.
Sure, and that's something, you know, with any amendment that you come through with development conditions, because this is not a development agreement, but it is a development, an MXU that has conditions, you can recommend, if you get a second motion, if you would like to approve those four amendments, but also increase the minimum square footage for commercial. I mean, that's something that you all can discuss and if, if you get a motion in a second, I think from Cooper Willis and if he's still in the lobby, you know, the whole reason for this is, is not really to not have commercial. I mean, he really wants more square footage for commercial because of Encompass and Encompass has looked at this site and they would like to build. But that is something that you may ask.
Yeah, here's the thing, guys, to me, in a, in a simplified form, we made an agreement that they were going to give us fifty dollars as a minimum. They've come to us and they're going to give us two thousand dollars and we want to have a discussion that we want to raise the fifty dollars. I just think we need to use a little bit of common sense and realize that this is a move in our direction and a very positive one at that. To Lisa's point, for future agreements, I don't have any problem with us requiring something larger if it fits the land that we're discussing. In this case, I think it's just a bit odd and I don't think that was her intent. It's a bit odd for us to consider that, given this particular agreement and the benefits that it has provided to us.
My concern is that if something were to change and given the financial situation and economic situation of the world, if Encompass goes away, heaven forbid, not a good thing. I hope they come, I'm very excited about them, that we are protected and that we don't go back to the higher density and less, you know, and only ten thousand square feet. I'm sorry, not common sense is not the same.
The lower density now, they would have, they not have to reapproach council to get a higher, at a later point?
That's what we're doing. That's what this ordinance is about.
Right, right. So, where are we at for this? Do anybody make a motion in a second?
We have not, we have not, because we just ended the public meeting when the discussion carried from the public hearing into an ordinance that we have not officially opened. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. This is the side of number one.
Now we can continue the discussion. Players, you got anything to add?
No, not really. I hadn't, I remember this thing coming up a reason and I kept wondering when something was going out. I know they're going to wait till Go Hill Road interchange was going to be, but they started on it, but it looks like it's going to be another four hundred years before they approve it.
As is what with all traffic issues, they're not anything that happens quickly, but it is still on the long range plan.
Well, I was not on council when it came through. And Penelope, as you all know, always sends information to the planning section and I generally, as the rule, take time to read what's your sense of it. And that's why I saw all of this and I was, I had no idea that was even out there. I talked to Penelope and I had been through a long time ago. Oh, so we don't have a better footprint. Let's take the dream completely.
We have a motion on the table to approve in a second. Do you have further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. Jamie?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Approved.
Mr. Moody?
Approved.
Larry?
Approved.
Trudy? Lisa?
Approved.
And I also will approve. Shante?
Thank you.
Uh huh, thank you, Penelope. Would you, or Davey, let the folks know in the lobby that we appreciate their being here? I'm trying to keep up with action items. Did we have any action item other than asking for Davey, Chris and Penelope to go over with us what a development agreement looks like? And in this particular case, would it have been more helpful to have had in the notes when the original development was struck or the original agreement was struck so that there could have been questions prior to the meeting?
Some of the original agreement was in there, but it had been redacted to reflect the new agreement, so I think we would have had a side by side comparison that would have been, I remember that, that was like one of the worst things I ever voted on this. I mean, it would have sounded like a side by side comparison, I think it would have been easier, even if it only reflects the parts that are being changed.
Right. Davey, Penelope and Christopher, I think to help avoid future confusion, when we have something come up such as this, which it doesn't very often, if you could provide us some of the basic information on the original agreement, that might be helpful so that questions, you know, certainly will have some basic understanding for all of us collectively. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Penelope. New business item number two, resolution to appoint Ricky Hudson as code enforcement officer. Davey is our subject matter expert. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept new business item number two.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Davey?
Yes, ma'am. Ricky Hudson is an utility inspector in the utility department and just frequently accepted that position due to COVID concerns and weren't able to get in front of it. We hope to do that in the near future, but anyone in that role, we really need them to have the ability to enforce some of our ordinance, the utility department and also enforce our code. So, we're asking that Ricky Hudson, if you sign, if you agree to this resolution, that you're an enforcement officer.
Do our enforcement officers go through training, testing? Is there something that makes people approval worthy or not?
It is a, an on the job training right now. We are working to get online training for code enforcement for all of our utility inspectors.
Okay. Any questions of Davey about the appointment of Ricky Hudson as a code enforcement officer to the town of Fort Mill? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. Trudy?
I vote yes.
Lisa?
Approved.
Larry?
Aye.
Jamie?
Approved.
Chris?
Approved.
Ronnie?
Approved.
And I too will approve. Thank you very much. New business item number three, first reading. Of an ordinance authorizing the execution and filing of a quitclaim deed for a platted right of way easement, Davey Broom will be our presenter. Do I have a motion?
Making motion to accept new business item number three.
Have a motion to accept and a second. Thank you. Davey?
Yes, mayor. Recently, the homeowner association of Forest Fort Mill neighborhood approached that about a piece of property that was previously designated in their development as a right of way, which was basically unused. This right of way was a stub out road that was for possible future use for interconnectivity with maybe a neighboring property. That has never taken place and when the roads and right of ways toward the forest were turned over to the town, this piece of this property was not included in that property. So, you've got this piece of property that is just basically there. It was mainly trees and just undeveloped land that the homeowner association is interested in taking over and wanting to paint. They reached out to the town for a quitclaim deed. Town does contend that we do not own this property and it's not vague to let you enter that right of way transition. So, if you agree to that quitclaim deed, we can turn over all of the rights and interest that the town of Fort Mill has in this piece of property.
How large is this property?
It's, it's very small. Just a bit of a, on the road.
I guess my question, when I looked at this, would be the connectivity to an undeveloped piece of property next door that I do believe we've turned down multiple times for development. How, if any, would this play into that issue?
If, if we turn this over, then we turn over all the rights to any future connectivity to that neighboring property. There, the homeowners in that neighborhood expressed their desire to not have connectivity to that neighboring property.
But it takes it out of our ability to approve or deny.
That's correct, so not we'd be turning over those rights to approve or deny any connectivity of the forest neighborhood.
Any proposed next? Are they not currently maintaining it?
No, ma'am, at the time they are not. Again, there's a huge number of owners who owns it. I believe some of the homeowners, the town should own it, the town contends we've not own it. So, you've got this property that's just sitting there there. So, I think the property owners are just starting to maintain it, but the town will not.
So, if the surrounding properties, I'm asking this probably stupidly, but are we not creating another doughnut hole that we are working to avoid? Even with a small piece of property? Barry on the line?
I am.
Barry, can you explain?
If, if the forest is in the town, this particular piece of property is not, explain to me how we can do a quitclaim deed on something we don't have a claim of? Well, first of all, you don't own it to begin with. You don't have any legal right or interest in it. The only potential claim that anybody could make that you might have an interest in it is that it was a platted street on plat recorded in the county records. You, you never were vested with any title to it and all the quitclaim deed is saying is if we do have any interest, we are giving it to the association. I don't think that means that the association then can unilaterally do anything with it necessarily. The county, I mean, or, and I haven't searched the title to the adjoining property. Is the adjoining property in the county? Yes, it is. Okay. The county would have to approve that connectivity that you're talking about through, you know, plat approval and all of that, but I, I don't think you own it anyway. I mean, you're, you're giving up something that you don't really own anyway and, I mean, it's a, it's a phantom issue, quite frankly.
Yeah, I, I guess, you know, at that point, then I'm questioning, how can we quit? The quitclaim just says we don't have any claim to it, correct?
Correct. But you don't, but, but you, but literally and legally, you don't.
Okay. Everybody got it?
Yeah, was that going to go to the county to do something?
Mm-hmm.
Everybody got it? All right, the motion on the table is to approve the quitclaim on this particular piece of property. Jamie, how do you vote?
In favor.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Chris?
Approved.
Larry?
Aye.
In favor? Lisa?
Approved.
Trudy?
Approved.
We will approve a quick, quick claim on this particular piece of property.
That we don't own.
That we don't own. Absolutely. We'll move into the information discussion portion of our agenda this evening with refinancing of revenue bond series 2015. Shante Bowler. Good evening, Shante.
Good, good evening, mayor and members of council. Let me first correct the two numbers. We're actually wanting to talk about two, twenty nineteen.
Let, let the record reflect that the agenda needs to change to bond series twenty nineteen, please.
That is deep. Note that we commonly request to let, it's all right.
Okay, thank you.
Last meeting, I may mention that there were possibilities that our interest rate changes that we didn't know. We did receive notification from the South Trail Landlord, Don Haskins, for his concern that where they are, we do this rate based upon the client aspect. So, we did receive that notification and we sent official request to pursue that your interest rate. That particularly known the structure with two sets of terms. First term is twenty year, twenty year portion of it, which the interest rate was at two point six percent, would be reduced to two point four percent. And then, on the thirty year portion, it would be from two point eight percent to two point six percent. Having said that, the reduction in our annual payment for the twenty year note would be about forty three thousand dollars, for the thirty year note, about thirty three thousand dollars, which combined over the life of the note, we would realize the cost savings one point two years. So, just wanted to make council aware that we have started the process for that. Those were the documents I left to be signed, mayor, so that we can follow through with that process.
Those are beautiful numbers, Shante.
Our, this particular note started October, October.
He just likes to hear. Outstanding.
Great job, great work.
Fantastic. Any further questions? Great news for the town, for us to be able to refinance and save that much money. So, thank you, thank you very much. Further questions for Shante? Comments to the issue? Motion on the table is to approve. Trudy? Lisa?
Approved.
Approved. We don't have to because it's an information. Running off track, you know? All right, with that, we do have one executive item for this evening. Please note that council may take action on executive session items listed on the agenda when they come back into public session. I will need a motion to move to executive session in a second. Okay, got a motion in a second. Jamie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Trudy?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Me, yes. All right, we will move into executive session and return shortly. Thank you very much. All right, let the record reflect that no decision or vote was taken in executive session. I need a motion to return to regular session, please.
So, may.
All right, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. All right, we've had a good night, a lot of good discussions. We're not going to do a round table tonight, so I'll entertain a motion for adjournment so we can off to home and eat dinner.
I make the motion, we adjourn.
Aye.
I have a motion for adjournment in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Please have a good evening. Thank you.